All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 12, 2025, meeting of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. We'll begin the meeting with a roll call. I'll ask our township manager, Dave Berman, to now please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Present.
Commissioner Forsti Grup.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
All members are present. Thank you. Now I ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Police Chief, John Viola.
Police allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the eternal love of our fellow citizens, of our nation under God, and to the justiciable and free agency of this world.
Thank you. To begin tonight's meeting, we'll begin with a check presentation from the J.D. McDonald Foundation to our five volunteer fire companies led by Commissioner McCollum. Commissioner McCollum, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to please welcome up John McDonald and his staff from the J.D. McDonald Foundation for a check presentation to the five fire chiefs in our township. Gentlemen, could you please come up as well?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is John McDonald, Jr. My father, a gentleman by the name of Jack McDonald, was a township commissioner elected in 1976 and served until his untimely death in 2001. He served with Commissioner Holmes back in many of those years and helped coach Commissioner McCollum at Hilltop. He was also a coach for the Haverford Hawks. Twenty-four years ago, when he passed away because of his allegiance to giving back, we all decided, the family decided, to create a foundation that has a very specific mission is to support the youth of Haverford Township in athletic and academic programs. We generate the revenue for the foundation by hosting an annual golf outing. The only two years we've missed it in the last 24 were due to COVID. Gotten it back on track, and this year we'll be hosting the 22nd Annual Jack's Outing at McCall Golf Club, right down on Lynn Boulevard and Township Line. It is our supreme pleasure to have given away over $550,000 to the township of Haverford, its residents, its families in need over the last 21 years. And this year, thanks to our dear board member, Eric Van Duzen, Fairview Avenue, neighbor of mine, we both grew up here in Haverford Town. He brought to the board, why don't we, we've never given back to the police department, the EMTs, or the fire departments. And we know that, especially with fire, it's a volunteer organization for the most part. And my dad was also a big supporter of the Bonner House when I was a kid. So today, on behalf of the J.D. McDonald Memorial Foundation, we have a check for $5,000, $1,000 for each of the fire houses here in Haverford Township, and couldn't be more pleased to give it over to you guys. Really appreciate it. There are smaller checks that actually will clear, and the chiefs already have them. But I have to ask you, if anyone's interested in the foundation, if anyone's interested in the outing, if anyone has any families in need or programs that we could contribute to, again, it's 100% Haverford Township mission-based, right? We get requests from different townships, different municipalities, but we've been tried and true to the fact that it's Haverford Township. So if anyone has any thoughts, we're here to support. And we do look for your support. Hopefully, you can make it out on June 9th to the 24th. And if you can't make it, as you're sharing with chief, we raise more money for the foundation if your company just wants to be a whole sponsor. Okay? So again, thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners?
Thank you. We'll offer a few photos to be taken. No, you can do it right here. I'll just get out of the way.
Maybe, um, you want to scoot down more so this is, yeah, go five feet. Great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll now move on to a special police appreciation and awards ceremony led by our Chief of Police. But first, we'll begin with Commissioner Gondak reading a proclamation. Commissioner Gondak, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas the police officers of Haverford Township have worked devotedly and selflessly on behalf of the people of Haverford Township, regardless of the peril or danger to themselves, and whereas these officers have safeguarded the lives and property of the residents of Haverford Township, and whereas these men and women, by their patriotic service and their dedicated efforts, have earned the gratitude of the residents of Haverford Township, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Commissioners of Haverford Township calls upon its residents to observe the week of May 11 through the 17th, 2025, as Police Week, and be it further proclaimed that the Commissioners of Haverford Township calls upon the community to observe May 15, 2025, as National Police Officers' Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in the service to their community. Proclaim this 12th day of May, 2025, by Judy Trombetta, President.
Well, now invite, thank you. We'll invite our Chief of Police to join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Excuse my back. This is our annual Commendation Awards for police officers who have gone above and beyond the call of duty, and we're honored to have them all here tonight and to pass out the awards in public. So we'll start with a life-saving award. Officer Cole Heinz, Kim Huguenard, Anthony Hughes. Please stand, come on up if you're here. This commendation is awarded to an officer who performs a lifesaving act under extraordinary circumstances, whereas the officer took direct and immediate positive action to preserve the life of another human being who was in danger of dying. The action taken by the officer did prevent the loss of human life, and the circumstances of the act were such that any delay in providing assistance would in all probability have resulted in a person's death. On Monday, November 11, 2024, at approximately 12:23 hours, the Haverford Township Police Department was dispatched to John Lee I. Associates on Westchester Pike for what was initially dispatched as a seven-year-old female experiencing an episode in the waiting room. The call was then upgraded to a cardiac arrest. Officer Anthony Hughes was the first officer to arrive at location and found employees that had already begun CPR on the victim. Officer Hughes had provided his vehicle AED to the scene and attached it to the victim. Officer Hughes was assisted on the scene by Officer Kimberly Huguenard and Officer Cole Heinz, as well as Norbert's ambulance. The officer was on the scene and the medics took over lifesaving measures. It was discovered the victim had regained a heartbeat prior to being transported to Lankinale Hospital. On Friday, November 16, 2024, Sergeant Kenny called Lankinale Hospital to check on the victim's condition. He was informed by his staff that the victim had survived and was doing well. Officers Kimberly, Kimberly Huguenard, Anthony Hughes, and Cole Heinz conducted themselves in a highly professional manner and immediately granted aid to a subject who needed immediate assistance to preserve her life. Further actions, Officers Huguenard, Hughes, and Heinz were awarded the official commendation for a lifesaving event. Officer Afghan, please come forward. Officer Afghan is being awarded the lifesaving commendation. This commendation is awarded to an officer who performs a lifesaving act under extraordinary circumstances. The officer took direct and immediate positive action to preserve the life of another human being. On Friday, July 26, at approximately 19:09 hours, Delcom dispatched for a call for a medical emergency at 128 Cathmer Road. Further notes from Delcom said it was a juvenile who was choking and unconscious. Officer Brittany Afghan was the first to respond in an emergency manner. Upon arrival, Officer Afghan was advised that the victim was a five-year-old female, was choking on a chicken nugget in the kitchen, was unresponsive. Officer Afghan raced to the kitchen area, observed that the child was turning blue in the face and the lips, and appeared that she couldn't stand on her own. Officer Afghan observed that the child's mother was attempting to give abdominal thrust that dislodged a blockage, but was unsuccessful. Observing the difficulty that the mother was having, Officer Afghan grabbed the child from her mother, immediately began to give back blows, and attempted to dislodge the blockage, which was successful. Officer Afghan then went to the next step in airway obstruction and began to give a series of abdominal thrusts, all while checking to see if the airway was free from the obstruction. After checking the airway for a second time, Officer Afghan then gave another series of abdominal thrusts. During this time, the food item did become dislodged, and the child began to breathe on her own, and the color came back to her face and lips. Norbert's ambulance responded to the scene, and the child was taken to Bryn Mawr Hospital for evaluation. Officer Afghan's quick response, as well as fast actions and recognizing lifesaving choking protocols, were displayed in the above instance. For her actions, she's being awarded the official commendation for a lifesaving event. Officer Howard, please come forward.
On Monday, March 17, 2025, at 08:11 hours, officers were dispatched to 107 Sunny Hill Lane for maternity. Upon Officer Howard's arrival, he located the expectant mother, Marissa Kearns, laying on the bathroom floor. Officer Howard assessed the situation and saw the baby's head and was crowning. Officer Howard, through his training and experience, knew that the baby was coming. Officer Howard guided Kearns through contractions and delivered the baby. During the delivery, Officer Howard observed that the umbilical cord was wrapped around the baby's neck. Officer Howard removed the cord from around the neck without issue. Haverford EMS arrived and took over. During the birth, Officer Howard exuded confidence in his abilities as a police officer to deliver the child without any complications. He remained calm and collected during this extremely stressful event. He provided a valuable service to this community and the Haverford Township Police Department by delivering the baby by himself. For this outstanding accomplishment, Officer Howard is being awarded the Commendation of Merit.
And if I could add, this is the second baby Larry has delivered in a very short amount of time, so. I have Officer Howard backed up. Sorry, I should have called you. Sergeant McCrae, Officer Howard, Officer Jones, Officer Nyheart, Officer Redding, Officer Runaloon, and Officer Shannon, come forward if you're here.
On Saturday, April 5, at 00:49 hours, officers were notified by Delcom that a Philadelphia police had a carjacking of a Subaru, a silver Subaru bearing Delaware registration at 48th and Cedar in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. The victim's credit cards were now being used in the area of 69th Street. Delcom advised Haverford Police to be on the lookout for the vehicle. Officer Adamski observed a vehicle fitting description traveling westbound on Westchester Pike in the 900 block. Officer Adamski called in, called out that he was now behind the vehicle as it was getting on 476 North. Officer Adamski, while waiting for additional units to back him up, observed that the vehicle was slowing down and pulling onto the shoulder. Officer Adamski activated his emergency lights to signal a stop. At this time, the driver suspect fled the vehicle while failing to put the vehicle in park. The vehicle rolled back into Officer Adamski's vehicle, and the driver fled into the brush. Officer Adamski took cover behind his waiting, his vehicle waiting backup. At this time, it was believed that the vehicle was stolen and the actor had fled the scene while armed. Sergeant McCrae, Officers Howard, Officer Jones, Officer Redding arrived. A felony stop was conducted, and three suspects were removed from the vehicle and taken into custody. During this time, Officer Ray Rodden of the Radnor Police Department arrived to assist. Officer Rodden was told that the driver had fled and showed the direction he was last seen. Officer Rodden began to check and locate this fleeing driver about 100 feet from the stolen vehicle. Sergeant McCrae, Officers James Jones, and Rodden were able to take that person into custody. A firearm was later located in the brush where the subject was hiding. During the incident, all officers remained calm and under control. Officers worked together closely and methodically to arrest all actors and recovered a firearm and returned a stolen vehicle. There were no injuries sustained by police to public actors. Because of the actions taken by Haverford, Radnor, and Marple Police, four dangerous suspects were taken off the streets. For these reasons, the listed officers are being awarded this distinguished unit commendation.
Sergeant McDonald, Detective Huffnell, Officer Akins, Officer Etier, Officer Gill, Officer Lozaro, Linker, Maguire, and Murphy, if you're here. On Thursday, October 3, 2024, approximately 4:28 hours, the Haverford Township Police responded to 723 Aubrey Avenue for burglary in progress. The caller stated she was asleep in her second-floor bedroom and woke up to an unknown male walking out of her bedroom. Immediately upon arrival, responding officers secured a perimeter that was set up on the exterior of the property, was inspected for signs of entry with nothing showing. Police located an unlocked rear door in the property. While maintaining their perimeter, officers made entry through the rear door into the kitchen and began to make verbal announcements of the presence and attempted to elicit response with negative results. Police moved to the last known location of the unknown subject, which was on the second floor. Once on the second floor, verbal contact was made with the caller who confirmed she still believed the actor was on the second floor. Entry was made into a bedroom on the second floor, which had closed closet door inside. Upon opening the closet door, a male was observed wearing all dark clothing, a mask, and gloves. The actor was given verbal commands to come out of the closet and was taken into custody without incident. The homeowner was safely removed from residence. Detective Huffnell responded to the scene, and the subject was later returned to interview and shorting burglary and related offenses. Due to the swift response and communication of all officers involved, an immediate perimeter was established allowing actor no means of escape. The teamwork displayed the, an incident allowed for a successful outcome and preserved the safety of Haverford Township residents. For those reasons, the listed officers are being awarded the distinguished unit commendation. Sergeant McDonald, Detective Hustle, Officer Akins, Officer Etier, Gill, Lozaro, Linker, Maguire, and Murphy. Congratulations. Sergeant De Sanctis, Detective Vernaccio, and Officer Maguire, again. Sorry, Ron. Lieutenant Kelly, also. This is the distinguished unit commendation. On Monday, August 12, 2024, the Haverford Township Police Department responded to a shooting that just occurred in the area of 2010 Westchester Pike. The shooting was reported to be a road rage-related incident involving two vehicles. As the initial officers responded, an adult female who was driving one of the vehicles was quickly triaged in an interview. Police obtained vital information about the shooter and the vehicle. Officer assisted paramedics assisting both the adult victim and her juvenile passenger. The information was also quickly provided to surrounding agencies. Additional officers were blocking the roadway and diverting traffic to preserve the crime scene. As more members of the department arrived, unseen physical and ballistic evidence were secured, witnesses were interviewed. The Upper Darby Police located the suspect vehicle within their jurisdiction within minutes after the shooting occurred, and Officer Rodden and the ambulance with the victims assisted them in making a positive identification and the arrest by the officers who responded to Upper Darby. Investigators conducted in-depth interviews with the victims, interrogate the offender, obtained search warrants and related investigations. Accident reconstruction experts mapped the collision scene and later secured both vehicles for further investigation. The critical incident was successfully resolved due to teamwork utilized by the officers from each major office and rank within the department. The effort involved all the officers led to the arrest of the suspect. For this reason, the listed officers are being awarded the distinguished unit commendation. Lieutenant Kelly, Sergeant De Sanctis, Sergeant Long, Detective Goodman, Detective Ross, Detective Vernaccio, Officers Etier, Officer Kelly, Officer Lozaro, Officer Maguire, Officer Murphy, Officer Pelosi, and Officer Watkins. Would the following officers please come forward? Chief Viola, Sergeant Kenny, Sergeant Zambon, Officer Howard, and Officer Huguenard.
On Thursday, February 27, 2025, at approximately 16:58 hours, Haverford Township Police Department was dispatched to the Dunkin' Donuts at 901 Westchester Pike for the report of an outside agency chasing subjects in reference to a stolen vehicle. Delcom advised that a detective was out with three subjects at the Dunkin' Donuts, while another detective was chasing a subject who fled on foot in the area of Wilson Avenue and Garfield Avenue. Officers Huguenard and Redding responded to the Dunkin' Donuts to assist the detectives, later determined to be Andrew Rathbun and Robert Small of Upper Marion Police Department. Officers Huguenard and Redding detained two males and one female juvenile subjects and preserved the stolen vehicle. Detective Flynn and Officer Howard arrived in the area of Wilson Avenue and Garfield Avenue and observed a white male juvenile wearing a white t-shirt and gray sweatpants running west on Wilson Avenue towards Harding Avenue. Information was provided that the subject may be armed, as he recently posted pictures of himself on social media brandishing a firearm while being involved in a vehicle pursuit with police. Upper Marion Police Detective Flynn, Officer Howard, and Lieutenant Dolan chased the subject into the rear yard of 153 Wilson Avenue, where he jumped a fence and continued running towards Shelbourne Road. Sergeant Zambon arrived on location and began checking backyards in the 100 block of Shelbourne Road with Lieutenant Dolan. Shortly after, Sergeant Zambon instructed Haverford units to set up a perimeter in the area with Officer Joseph Adamski in the 100 block of Wilson Avenue, Officer Shannon on Washington Avenue between Shelbourne Road and Roosevelt Avenue, Officer Howard in the 100 block of Sycamore Road, and Sergeant Zambon securing the intersection of Manoa Road and Shelbourne Road. Upper Marion Police detectives advised that the subject, a juvenile known to them, had been involved in several pursuits with police while operating stolen vehicles. Upper Marion detectives received information that the stolen vehicle in question had a license plate reader hit along Westchester Pike within the past hour, and they just happened to spot that vehicle at the Dunkin' Donuts while checking the area. Sergeant Kenny, Officer Villanueva, and Chief Viola surveyed the area in their vehicles and on foot, looking for the suspect. With no K-9 units available in Delaware County, Sergeant Zambon requested that Delcom notify Lower Marion Police Department, who agreed to send their dog. Sergeant Zambon had Delcom request assistance from Radnor and Upper Darby Police Departments as well. Officers surveying the area were able to obtain information from residents that the subject was last seen approximately 20 minutes prior, running towards Bailey Park. Shortly after, Officer Villanueva was notified by a resident that a subject matching the description was just seen in the area of Belvidere Avenue and Ralston Avenue. Sergeant Zambon requested that all officers respond into the area and set up a perimeter. Officers Howard and Villanueva then observed the male run into the backyard of 2312 Belvidere Avenue, where they were able to take the subject into custody while Detective Flynn held him at gunpoint. Despite responding to a priority call with limited information and inability to communicate by radio with outside agencies, Haverford Township Police Personnel utilized tremendous teamwork in assuring the apprehension of a potentially dangerous felon. For these reasons, the listed officers are being awarded the distinguished unit of commendation. Chief John Viola, Lieutenant Eugene Dolan, Sergeant Michael Kenny, Sergeant Stephen Zambon, Detective Michael Flynn, Detective Jerry Goodman, Officers Joseph Adamski, Lawrence Howard, Kimberly Huguenard, Kevin Redding, Nicholas Shannon, and Hector Villanueva.
Our last one and two Officer of the Year. Every year when we have our annual, semi-annual meeting with the supervisors, we discuss Officer of the Year, and it's voted on by the sergeants and the lieutenants in the room. We look for an officer who goes above and beyond on a daily basis, who responds, yes, please come up. Thank you. Officer Maguire, thank you. So Officer Maguire is a nine-year veteran of the Haverford Township Police Department, has held several positions within the department, field training officer, officer in charge, the honor guard, bike unit, first aid and CPR instructor, and is a fire investigator. He previously was assigned to temporary positions as Investigations Special Operations. In his off-time, Officer Maguire serves as First Assistant Chief in the Radnor Township Fire Services. Officer Maguire functions as an informal leader on his squads, who other officers would frequently go for questions and assistance. Due to Officer Maguire's broad-based knowledge in police work and in the fire service, makes him an asset to the township. Officer Maguire often volunteers to assist with supervisory duties when a sergeant is unavailable. He also has many great characteristics, including very approachable, optimistic, and supportive of department initiatives. Officer Maguire was primarily assigned to the sector car in his role within the squad, and this is certainly a position that was relied on heavily by his supervisors. He took on his role with head, with a head of steam, does everything asked of him, and then some. Officer Maguire is in the top tier statistical category tracked by the Police Department, one category which he leads a far amount of other times he assisted as backup officer. His supervisor stated that, knowing that Officer Maguire is on the scene, they have confidence that the incident is going to be handled thoroughly with common sense within the department guidelines. These qualities are the reason he is the next candidate for promotion to the rank of sergeant. Officer Maguire was described as always being a consummate professional. He interacts extremely well with both the extremely well with both the public and his fellow officers. His excellent work product and willingness to assist his fellow officers, fellow officers is to be commended. Officer Ryan McGuire is the Haverford Township Police Department's Officer of the Year.
Thank you. We'll now take a five-minute recess to allow some time for photographs to be taken. We'll reconvene in about five minutes. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. We're returning from a brief recess. We'll now resume our Haverford Township Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you for your patience, and we appreciate those of you joining us here and those watching from home. We'll now move on to agenda item number two to hear a presentation of a proclamation recognizing stuttering awareness we can have for township read by Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Quinn, the floor is yours.
I'm sure you guys all knew that I would be the one to re-read this. And so when I was a little kid, I thought there were, there was a cure for this. I could either talk from the South, talk like I was from the South without the accent, or I could sing. And being from, from the North, to talk from the South, that wouldn't have worked, and the singing career would then ban out either. So I'm gonna re-read this paragraph. Maybe I may say it now. So where, where, whereas nat, 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 national stuttering awareness week was first proclaimed by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to recognize the second week of May as a time to raise public awareness about stuttering and, and, and the appearances of those who live with it. And whereas stuttering is a complex speech disorder that affects over three mil, mil, million Americans and millions more globally across all races or ethnicities, ages, and genders. And whereas people who stutter know exactly what they want to say and deserve the time, pay, 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 patience and, and respect to express themselves fully. And whereas there is no known cure for stuttering, but early in, 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 and supportive speech therapy and include, include, inclusive environments, cannon and power individuals to communicate with confidence and live authen, authentically. And whereas people who stutter are oft, well, often encounter so, 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 social stigmas, like bullying and discrimination, which can negatively impact their edu, their educational, professional, and personal opportunities. Yet despite these challenges, many thrive and lead with strength, courage, and creativity. And whereas famous and successful individuals such as President Joe Biden, James Earl Jones, Sam, 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 Miller L. Jackson, Emily Blunt, Ed Sheeran, and Elvis Presley have openly shared their experiences with stuttering, inspiring others, and helping to challenge harm or harmful stereotypes. And whereas the 2020, 2020, 2025 theme for nat, nat, national stuttering awareness week is unapologetically dead technically me, is a powerful call to authenticity, pride, and visibility, inviting people who stutter to show the world what stuttering really looks like and why every voice matters. And whereas Haverford Township is proud to stand with the stuttering community and to affirm the dignity, worth, and belonging of every resident. We believe in creating a community where all the people regard, regardless of how they speak, feel heard, supported, and accepted. Now therefore, the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 12 through, May through, May 18, 2020, 2025, as stuttering awareness week in Haverford Township. And furthermore, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford and carried as all representatives to take this opportunity to learn and uplift those who stutter, and to join in celebration, celebrating every unique voice in our community. Proclaim this 12th day of May by...
Well done.
Well, thanks, guys. And I'd like to say thanks to two people who are here, who I serve on this board of the No, 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 No,[1118.92]
I'm appreciative of State Senator Capaletti's efforts in Harrisburg, introducing the resolution at the state level to recognize the month and to work on legislation for better food and medicine labeling regarding gluten. My personal experience has included my place, has included asking my place of worship in Delaware County to have gluten-free communion options. And I recently was concerned when a minor league ballpark in the region advised in advance of me attending a game that their no outside food policy did not make an exception for gluten-free food. Fortunately, awareness of the Americans with Disabilities Act and its provisions was helpful. These experiences are a reminder of the value of inclusiveness. Finally, as someone who finds humor to be a small help in life's challenges, I read some of the lyrics, yes, here we go again, from the Hungry Food Band's "Stay Gluten Free, Gluten Will Kill You" song. Yes, the same artist who wrote our town anthem, "Haverford Township is a Great Township." Quote, "You gotta stay away from the gluten. Everyone is eating the gluten and they're feeling very sick. When you're buying food at the grocery store, only buy the food that says gluten-free. That doesn't mean they are giving away free gluten. It means the product does not contain any gluten." Thank you.
I was really hoping you were gonna sing, but Ms. Hurwitz, you're next. Thank you.
Hello, Felicia Hurwitz, 8th Ward. I first appeared before this body to raise the alarm about our heritage street trees in 2009, when my next-door neighbor cut down a 150-year-old mature oak tree because it bore too many acorns. This tree had been a source of food and nurturance for thousands of songbirds. Endless squirrels, rabbits, hawks made its home there. It was the mother tree of our street, our protector from wind, sun, flooding, our generator of clean air. It was magnificent, but it did have a lot of acorns. At that time, as now, there was a regulation saying that heritage street trees required replacement if they were taken down, and a permit was needed for removal. I asked the commissioners then to enforce our regulations. They declined, as the codes officer then, as now, interpreted our regulations so narrowly that almost nothing qualifies as a street tree. Nobody ever gets fined for taking them down, and no replacements are ever insisted on. Needless to say, no replacements were ever planted in that spot or nearby. 16 years later, every mature street tree on my block has been cut down. Most were healthy trees that someone found inconvenient. Some needed maintenance, branches trimmed or treatment for pests. No one on my street bothered to get permits. No replacement trees were planted. Unscrupulous tree companies have a profit motive to tell homeowners that the removal is necessary. They know Haverford, unlike other townships like Lower Marion, does not enforce our tree permitting laws or require replacement street trees. Many in our town consider themselves environmentalists. They use paper straws, carry reusable bags, and drive EVs. Well, I have a message for you. You are misguided. Turning our streets into scorching shade deserts that can't handle stormwater, can't harbor birds, animals, or pollinators is more damaging than a lifetime of plastic straws. Some people think that maintained trees are dangerous. They are not dangerous. Not dangerous to your children, not dangerous to anyone if they are maintained. The pesticides and herbicides you spray on your pristine sterile lawns are more likely to hurt our children than falling tree branches. Our community is being short-sighted. Commissioners, I am begging you, again, to enforce and strengthen our street permits and to fine violators. Create a systematic way to replace our street trees. Systematic, where if one's taken down, it's put up, a new one's put up. It is too late for my block, and please come visit 300 Block of Farwood and see what I mean. Don't let it be a harbinger of Haverford's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doughty, you're next.
My name's Dori Doughty, and I live in the 6th Ward, Haverford Township. I'm here tonight to raise once again the issue of the planning commission's required review of the updated draft Haverford 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The draft Haverford 2035 Comprehensive Plan, updated in April of 2025, is not the same as the September 2022 draft plan previously reviewed by the planning commission. It contains major new elements, including the Town Center on Haverford Road, the PROS Plan, the Safety Action Plan as the result of the Safe Streets for All study, and a future land use map that now depicts residential areas all having the same density, whereas before, these areas were identified as high, medium, or low density. All of these new items were not part of any prior planning commission review. Under the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, the planning commission is required to review and hold a public meeting on any new or substantially revised comprehensive plan before it is considered for adoption. This step is not optional. It is a legal safeguard for transparency and public trust. So I have some key questions for the Board of Commissioners and for the residents present here this evening and those watching this recording later. Why has the updated draft Haverford 2035 Comprehensive Plan not been formally reviewed by the planning commission despite these major changes? What is the justification for skipping this critical step when Pennsylvania law and our own township's process requires it? How can residents have confidence in this plan if the planning commission, the very body charged with reviewing it, has not had the opportunity to do so? If you recall, at the January 29, 2025, community meeting, multiple residents, including a member of the planning commission speaking as a resident, all publicly requested that the planning commission review this updated plan before it be voted on for adoption. This was not just my concern. It is a concern shared by your constituents and by members of your own advisory board. I respectfully urge the board to answer these questions publicly and to send this comprehensive plan back to the planning commission for their review and the public input that our community deserves and that the law requires. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner. Wagner, Ms. Wagner. Mr. Lee, you're up next.
I'm Met Wagner. I live on Rosewood Lane. I've been raising questions about the comprehensive plan since 2018. I'm not a fan, and I agree with everything that Dori just said. I went back to the original Survey Monkey. Question number two, please check the top three types of businesses you would most like to see emphasized in Haverford Township. Reducing traffic congestion was the first. The second is reducing energy consumption, and the third was addressing flooding and stormwater management. I wondered about this question because you're supposed to be choosing three types of businesses you would like to see emphasized, not what you think is wrong with the township. Question six, please check the top two improvements that would cause you to make greater use of the Norris Town High Speed Line. More frequent service. Bus service and two additional areas, shelters, and additional parking were the top four answers. Oh, I'm sorry. The now-known as the M Line will have decreased service, not more service, and no service after 9:00 p.m. as of January 1, 2026, per SEPTA cutbacks. The 126 line is being stopped altogether. It goes through Haverford Township. And as far as additional parking, the R-5 Palely-Thorndale is being eliminated as of January 1, moving more riders to the M Line that I would imagine would need to drive to the M Line to park. So that's no more additional parking spaces. Also, the 44 from Center City to Ardmore is gone. Multiple rail services are gone in the bus service. I used to take the 44 lots of times out to Ardmore as a kid. How does this SEPTA budget crunch affect your Haverford Road corridor plans in the current comprehensive plan? The township sent out postcards to residents to encourage comments about the current comprehensive plan. Nobody's here. Various commissioners are having meetings. Mine has suggested May 19 at Chestnut Wald, but it's not written in stone yet, because he's inviting some of you to join him. I think we need an open dialogue with township officials to have our questions answered, not just this stand-up, say-your-piece, sit-back-down, shut-up. The Haverford Road corridor is my concern, because I'm in Ward 6. Have any of you walked the Haverford Road corridor? Does the traffic on Haverford Road scare you as you walk? I recently was driving on Montgomery Avenue in Lower Marion. I told you I'm a Lower Marion product. Speed limit was 25. Why is Haverford Road 35? Are you aware of the depths of the lots on the DMI side of the road? How do you propose three-story buildings with parking behind the building? Will you be demolishing the stone wall that runs behind those buildings between them and the Rosemont properties? And last but not least, I've been in my house since 1992. I've been a Haverford Township resident since '79. I dare say most of those businesses on the Haverford Corridor have been the same most of the time I've been here. When they're kicked out, property sold, new construction, empty storefront. Have you accounted for that decrease in revenue for Haverford Township? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Mr. Lee.
I'm a Haverford Township resident. Recently, we sent out 18,000 flyers to residents, and the Comprehensive Plan is 122 pages. I've read the April-September 2022 Plan, the December 2024 Plan, the April 2025 Plan. I don't understand a lot of stuff. And I think it's too much to expect residents will be able to read that and respond by June 2, and you're gonna vote on it on June 9. It's just too much. If we want input, let's try to get input. I also agree with what first speaker, another speaker, said about the residents complaining about changes from the September 2022 Plan to the December 2024 Plan. And I, too, wonder about whether we follow the municipal planning code. And I'm sure that we have some type of analysis and things like that. So I'm hoping that we share that with people, so, because otherwise, we have a document that's going to be challenged by residents, and they'll do it as soon as some construction is done near their house. So I'm wondering, can we fix the document so it's not challengeable? And we have the same problem, as mentioned, with the residential portion, where we changed the high, medium, and low density in December to just residential in April. What I have read is that that gives an opening to developers. That creates an inconsistency between the Comprehensive Plan and our, the text and the charts and our zoning, wherever that will be. Then we have a lot of changes going on in the township that most people don't know anything about. We're having the mixed use, it's gonna be all along West Chester Pike, Eagle Road, Darby Road, Haverford Road, and M Line, Route 30. And people need to know about this, because we sent out something saying to them that the, there would be no changes in residential density. But these things are all right next to residences, so it's gonna impact parking and things like that, and we should be telling residents about that. And the number-one concern in the township has been, since it started, that, about having too much density, too much congestion. And I think this will just contribute to that. And I agree about with the M Line. We're doing all this development along the M Line, and we're having massive SEPTA cuts. We had the bus revolution for December, and now in April, they're talking about a 45% cut, elimination of regional rail. I think we're losing like five bus lines in Haverford Township, and we're having cutbacks on a couple other lines. It's just, to me, we're, we're leading ourselves up to another vulnerability. We're asking people to support a plan that is built along the M Line when we don't know what the future of the M Line is. It seems kind of, there should be a contingency. It just seems a little bit irresponsible. Then we are talking about using forum-based zoning code. That's what FHI Studio has expertise in. Nobody even knows what that is. That's a completely different way of approaching it, and residents, if we intend to do that, residents need to know what that is before we vote on this. I've heard that partially this is due for increased revenue, and I'd like to see projections on the increased revenue, because it seems like a lot of times, these things just wind up costing more money. And we're concerned not just about the township taxes, which is a small proportion of it. It's the school taxes, the county taxes. So we need to know that. And you want to vote on this on June 9. There's just too much that has to be done. Anyway, everybody thinks that the township is maxed out, and when I look at those charts in there, we've essentially been maxed out since 1960. And if you look at where my neighborhood was built in 1939, you can ask what your residents... And what we want to do is we want to take and put more stuff in the most congested areas of the township. Anyway, I'm hoping that we can work this out somehow, residents can learn more, and the plan will be more bulletproof. It won't be as, it just looks like it's not thought through. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will now open the floor up to the audience. For anybody who'd like to speak on an agenda item, I'll start on the left-hand side. Anybody in the audience? On the right-hand side, anybody? Okay. Thank you, everyone who took the time to participate in public comment this evening. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues on the board for any responses or remarks regarding matters raised during the citizens' forum. Any of my colleagues wish to...
Madam President?
Yes, Commissioner.
Two points. Mr. Hall unfortunately just left, but I wanted to let him know that the Phillies now have, with cooperation with Char Bread, now have gluten-free hot dogs and gluten-free cheese steaks available on the first level of Citizens Bank Park. And I have family members who are gluten-free, and it is a welcome addition. I also wanted to confirm that I will be holding a constituent meeting at Chestnut Wald on May 19, next Monday night. I will be bringing township officials. Obviously, any issue is, is available, but the Comprehensive Plan is something folks are particularly concerned about and something that our officials and I will be prepared to address and hear and engage in conversations. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, anybody else?
Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner Hart.
Follow-up about the shade tree. I share your concerns about the loss of our tree canopy, but a public shade tree, the definition is ours, the trees in park or in the right-of-way. Some of the language can be confusing, as if a branch from someone, on someone's property overhangs the street, it's not a, a public street, they don't need a, to go to the township to get a permit to take the tree down. It's only the ones that are in the right-of-way.
We need to change the law.
Well, we would need to change it, but that's how it's currently written.
Thank you. Any further comments from my colleagues? Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to invite our Chair of the Commissioners' Fire Committee, Commissioner Gondak, to share this month's Bureau of Fire update. Commissioner Gondak, the floor is yours.
Thank you. For April of 2025, this is the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire report. There were total incidences of 72, of which 55 were township incidents, and 17 were out-of-township mutual aid incidents. The average personnel per call were 18. We had 813 personnel hours committed to incidents and 1,114 personnel hours committed to training. The Bureau of Fire responded to one working fire within Haverford Township on April 17 at 5:26 a.m. at 26 Brendan Drive. A total of 32 members were on scene for an hour and a half. The Bureau of Fire also provided mutual aid to six working fires within Delaware County and one working fire in Lower Marion Township. All five fire companies attended a Fire Dynamics program presented by Deputy Chief Brian Tears of the Philadelphia Fire Department. I would also like to report that the ambulances that support our township in the month of April had 537 dispatches, of which 144 were out-of-town responses, generating 459 patient care, patient care reports. Finally, I would just like to notice, note that May 18 to the 24th is National EMS Week, where we honor and thank our emergency medical services personnel for their time and effort. That's the report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondak. Are there any questions or comments related to this report? In hearing none, we'll move on to our Township Auditor update. Mr. Anderson, floor is yours.
Sorry, don't have much for material tonight, but I just want to say, support SEPTA, and also congratulations to all those officers tonight on the recognitions. For this meeting, I've reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Anderson? Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to invite our Township Manager, Dave Berman, to provide his update for this month. Mr. Berman, the floor is yours.
The deadline to pay 2025 real estate taxes before the penalty period goes into effect is May 31. That's a reminder. We're also going to be working with a group called Helpseed. It's a clothing drive, and we'll be collecting used clothing. 95% of what they collect can be reused or recycled. Clothing is sold after the fact. It's got to be clean, it's got to be dry, it's got to be odorless, and they're taking all kinds of clothes, including shoes, and that drive will take place here at the Township Building on June 14 from 9 a.m. to 12 noon. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments related to Mr....
I have two questions. One is, will the township be going to summer, when will the township be going to summer hours?
We will do that over, right after Memorial Day, and that would be an extended work-hour day for employees here at the Township Building, and we will close, so that'll be Monday through Thursday, and we'll close early on Friday.
Okay. So, and you said the tax deadline was May 31?
That's correct.
Okay. So then, just for anyone listening to this, on May 30, which would be the last business day prior to that deadline, the township will be closing a little bit earlier? Is that correct?
No, I believe summer hours start, I believe it's June, the Wednesday after, the first Wednesday in June, because it coincides with a pay period for us. But even so, the last day, we always will stick around until the end of the business day. So Finance Department staff will be on hand. Residents can also pay their taxes online, either via credit card or an e-check, all the way up to midnight on whatever deadline it is, whether it's the end-of-the-year deadline or the discount deadline. Always goes to the end of the business day.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any further questions or comments? All right. We now move on to Agenda Item Number 7, the approval of warrants. I'll now entertain a motion.
I move to approve warrant number 5 of 2025, totaling $8,257,759.68. Comprising, general sewer fund payroll for April 24 of 2025 in the amount of $850,736.43. General sewer fund payroll for May 8, 2025 in the amount of $754,382.51. General fund disbursements in the amount of $1,412,767.68. Sewer fund disbursements in the amount of $240,046.16. Community development block grant fund disbursements in the amount of $66,728.10. Capital projects fund disbursements in the amount of $996,932.3. American Rescue Plan fund disbursements in the amount of $1,3349.65. Debt service on the 2018 Series, principal and interest in the amount of $2,443,598.75. Debt service on the 2020 Series A, principal and interest in the amount of $386,871.25. Debt service in the 2021 Series, interest only, in the amount of $84,373.75. A credit card statement ending April 27, 2025, in the amount of $17,973.37.
Heard a motion from Commissioner Holmes. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none. Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number 8, Appointments. Beginning with Commissioner Holmes, we'll begin with your appointment of a representative to the 6th Ward to serve on the Environmental Advisory Committee. A vote is not required for this appointment.
I would just like to note, I'm going to reappoint Robert Graff to serve on the Environmental Advisory Committee for a term to continue through December 31, 2026.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I'll entertain a motion to appoint a Civil Service Commission Solicitor.
President Trombetta.
Yes, Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
I would like to nominate John McLaughlin to serve as our Solicitor for the Civil Service Commission.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We've heard a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations for Civil Service Commission Solicitor?
Madam President, may I nominate Andrew Rao for Civil Service Solicitor?
Second.
Thank you. We've heard a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
With a voice vote, all those in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Motion to close carries. Board will now consider Andrew Tau or John McLaughlin for the Civil Service Commission Solicitor. Mr. Berman, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Andrew Rao.
Rao, sorry, forgive me.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Commissioner Cavender.
Mr. Rao.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. Rao.
Commissioner Quinn.
Mr. Rao.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Rao.
Commissioner McCollum.
Mr. Rao.
Commissioner McCluskey.
John McLaughlin.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. Rao. Congratulations to Andrew Rao. Thank you. All right. We'll now move on to consider the approval of the items listed on the consent agenda. Chomping at the bit, let's go. All right, go ahead.
To approve items A through G of the consent agenda, as further detailed in the public packet, second.
I've heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any requests, which is what I was gonna get to, are there any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Apologize, because I was not here last week, I was away. I assume no controversy about the skating and locker room renovations?
That is correct. Any further questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. The board will now consider three ordinances this evening, starting with the second reading of ordinance number P52025, a traffic ordinance. I'll now entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner McCollum.
Motion to adopt the second reading of Ordinance Number P5-2025, amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 1960, adopted June 30th, 1986, and known as General Laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, Vehicles on Traffic, to install stop signs on Hill Road in both directions at the intersection with Liedham Road. Second.
I've heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board?
I'd just like to make a comment that I, for 27 years, lifted that intersection and saw many near misses, and when my mother sold the house, the new homeowner approached me and asked me for this, so happy to, you know, bring this up.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Board will now consider a second reading of Ordinance Number P6-2025 regarding a sewer dedication. I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt second reading of Ordinance P6-2025, accepting the dedication of certain sanitary sewer system identified as the Darby Road Sanitary Sewer Facilities.
Heard a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We've heard a first and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. Board will now consider a first reading of Ordinance Number P8-2025 regarding sticker parking on Hampton Road. I'll now entertain a motion.
So, motion to adopt the first reading of Ordinance P8, or 2025, for further amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 10, or 1960, adopted June 30th, 1986, and known as the General Laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, Vehicles and Traffic, to designate the west side of Hampton Road as sticker parking only from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Commissioner.
I just wanted to ask, forgive me for not knowing, where's Hampton Road?
In my word, it's over by the high, the high school.
Thanks. What's that?
Off Mill.
Off Mill.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, we'll move to, Mr. Berman, please.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
No.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
No.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Move on to Agenda Item Number 11, Resolutions. The Board will consider one resolution this evening. We'll begin with Resolution Number 2449-2025, which pertains to the Township application for our liquid fuels allocation. I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2449-2025, authorizing the application to the Delaware County Council for allocation of 2025 county liquid fuels tax funds for streetlight operating expenses incurred and paid in 2025.
Second. Thank you. I've heard a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. We now move on to Agenda Item Number 12, Approvals. I'll now entertain a motion to approve a building permit.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner McCollum.
Will authorize a permit for the proposed demolition of the house and garage at 1744 Vermont Road. Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number 13, Contract Awards. I'll now entertain a motion related to the contract for the Pennsy Trail Extension plantings.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner McCollum.
Motion to award a contract in the amount of $44,600 for plantings along the Pennsy Trail Extension and replacement of two rain gardens to archwild under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Epstein.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to award a contract for the demolition of 1744 Vermont Road.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner McCollum.
Motion to award a contract in the amount of $23,000 for the demolition of the house and garage at 1744 Vermont Road to N. Ebenezer Contractors, Inc., having the lowest responsible bid. Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board?
Yes, Madam President, just, just to reiterate what I said last week for the public, for someone who's just watching this week, this, this demolition did go before the historical commission, and that was recommended by the commission based on the presentation by the township.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman, please.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. So we will now move on to Agenda Item Number 14, the continuation of Citizens Forum, providing an opportunity for members of the public who wish to address the Board, and this does not need to be on an Agenda item. I kindly ask that you use your three minutes to provide your comments or ask questions that you have. And with that, I will start on the left-hand side. Yes, Ms. Doughty.
Hi again, my name's Dari Doughty, Sixth Ward, Haverford Township. Some additional questions I have with only, related to the comprehensive plan, with only a minimum of 45 days given to residents to review both the December 2024 plan and this April's 2025, the April 2025 edition of that. Why just the minimum of 45 days? Secondly, 18,000 postcards, thank you, Mr. Berman, were sent out, that's great, but if we're only giving residents one hour on June 2nd to have a public meeting, will this hearing be a two-way dialogue, which is sorely needed? There's not been a full presentation of the plan, as had been done more thoroughly in the draft of the 2022 plans. Why hasn't there been a thorough presentation given? And last, one of the things too, is that we had two ward meetings recently, thanks for that, Ward's one and four, and the other one, Ward Five, recently, when the comprehensive plan discussion went on too long, it seems like it was sort of, we don't have time, we have to move on to something else. Doesn't that give evidence that more discussion and dialogue is needed if that seemed to be taking up a lot of the two meetings that I attended? I kind of crashed the two, thank you. There needs to be more time given to residents and more public meetings with a section-by-section review. This plan doesn't make sense to many, still doesn't, some people still don't even know about it, and even one of the postcards, even if the postcards were sent out, at one of the ward meetings, someone was saying, how do I get to the plan? So what is the Board of Commissioners' role in making sure that this plan is understood by its constituents? The role of the Planning Commission was to enable constituents to have an understanding about the comprehensive plan. Is the Board of Commissioners charged with doing that, since the Planning Commission step was skipped? And just two other things that, I'm hearing those in favor of the current plan, comprehensive plan, that we need to have more tax revenue, and that can only, we can only do that if we increase density in commercial corridors. Our township is already overbuilt, and even the plan states that, and we already have excessive problems with vehicular congestion. Have we carefully considered reducing our spending and holding off expenditures, just like we do in our own households, when we have, you know, limited budgets? I also hear comparisons of our township compared to Lower Marion Township as far as tax revenues. Isn't that like comparing apples to oranges? And the density of Lower Marion is half of what Haverford Township has. Lastly, in closing, if this plan is so important, as I keep hearing it is, why does it not feel like it is with it being rushed through? And it doesn't feel like the input is really welcomed, especially if it's counter to what the plan proposes, that's just my feeling. There definitely seems to be a disconnect of words and actions, and I'd like to request that these be better aligned. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lee.
I'm Mike Lee, Haverford Township resident. I just have a basic question about the relationship between the comp plan and the zoning. What I hear from a lot of people is, comp plan doesn't matter, we just worry about the zoning. And my understanding is, is that the comp plan must flow directly into the zoning, and if you do zoning, that's not connected with the comp plan, it's open for challenge. And I'm curious about that, if you could maybe enlighten us about it? Thank you.
Let's get through comments in the notes. Thank you. All right, any further comments from the public on the left-hand side? Anybody on the right-hand side? Okay, now we'll open up for a response from the Board and from my colleagues up here. So maybe Mr. Walco will start with you, and you can respond? Thank you.
I think to answer your question, sir, zoning takes the place of the comprehensive plan, and by that, I mean, the comprehensive plan can say whatever it would like to say. It might say, hey, we hope that this area of the township might be used in a certain way in the future. However, it's the zoning map and the zoning ordinance that's going to stick, and that any applicant or developer is going to have to follow when they're developing any properties. And that being said, if, if someone wanted to propose a rezoning for a property, even though it's zoned a certain way, they may look to the comp plan, or the Planning Commission, or the township may look to the comp plan to see, oh, is this in line with our comp plan? Should we consider rezoning this a certain way? But it would still take action on behalf of the township to agree that it should be rezoned. It can't be made unilaterally by a developer. But as I said, it certainly would be something that they would try to use to say why the township should consider having a different zoning area for, in line with the comprehensive plan. But no, it's, it's certainly not going to give somebody a right to come in day one and say, even, not follow the zoning, instead follow a comprehensive plan.
Mr. Walco, could you also share with the public how we go about changing a zoning ordinance, so it, right, it requires a vote, two times, then?
It will, it would require, well, it could start from one of two ways. One, it could be a petition from a resident, but it would still have to go through the Planning Commission's Board, could agree, or they could simply say, no, we choose not to rezone. It still relies exclusively on this Board's decision as to what they want to have happen. Alternatively, the Board themselves can come to the decision to say, hey, we should rezone, but even if that decision is from the Board, even if it's directly someone brought it, but it came from the Board, it still has to go through the process of being sent to the Township Planning Commission. The County Planning Commission receives the reviews, the feedback. If there is a rezoning of a particular parcel or area, and it's not too extensive or unmanageable, it would be, notices would be given to the surrounding property owners. The property would be posted, which is required under the municipality's planning code. It would then have to be advertised in a newspaper two times. There would be a public hearing, that would be before this Board on that rezoning, and it would then, based upon Haverford's requirements, have to come before you twice for the two readings of that zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions, or, yeah, comments from this Board?
I'd like to make a comment about the comprehensive plan. I've been doing constituent outreach in Ward Two to make sure everyone knows the library's reopening, because that is the most important thing that's going to happen next week in all of Haverford Township. But I have also been asking people whether they receive that postcard about the comp plan, and they have. And by and large, the people who actually come to the door when I knock have actually read the plan, and they are pretty happy, at least the ones I've spoken to, with the stress in the comprehensive plan to work on economic development, work on having more diverse housing choices. I've talked to a number of senior citizens who are very concerned, that they'd like to stay in the township, but can't find any place they'd like to live that is maybe on one floor. So I would say that people, people are reading the plan, and yes, it's 122 pages, but it is very well-written, I think, and it's got a lot of helpful diagrams and infographics to explain some of the, some of the points and the analysis there. So I'm very much looking forward to the June 2nd public comment period. I think it's going to be really critical to hear what folks want to say, and also to receive, I assume, a summary of the written comments that have been sent to us by email. But it's an important plan, dialogue is important, and the dialogue is not going to end, it's going to continue as we look at how to rewrite our zoning code to make Haverford Township a strong community for the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Forsti Grubb. Any further comments? All right, then we move on to New Business. Are there any matters that my colleagues would like to bring forward for discussion at this time under New Business? Hearing none, we now move on to Number 16, Other Business, during which Commissioners may make their final remarks. So we'll start with Commissioner Gondak.
Thank you. First, I'd just like to say, this past April 30th, I had the pleasure of holding a joint ward meeting for the first and fourth ward with Commissioner Trombetta, so I'd like to take a moment to publicly thank Commissioner Trombetta, along with all of the township officials that gave their time to come out that evening to speak with and meet with constituents and answer their questions. And I'd also like to thank all of the constituents who came out to that meeting to get their[1654.78] who came out to that meeting to get their questions answered and to learn more about the township. I hope that it was informative, and I hope to continue to have more of these meetings in the future. And hopefully, the more that we have, the more people can attend, and so on. Westgate Hills Civic Association is holding movie night on May 16th. That's this Friday. It's at the park. The movie starts obviously at dusk, but the event starts prior to that. I believe it's Wreck-It Ralph is the movie. It's always a fun event. I suggest, it's family-friendly. I suggest, if you're around, to bring the family and come on out and enjoy the movie in the park. I'd like to take a moment to just reiterate my thanks to the Haverford Township Police Department. Obviously, tonight was, you know, their annual awards ceremony. I can't speak highly enough of the force and all of the brave men and women who were honored today with the various recognitions that were given to them by the department. Finally, just want a friendly reminder, because we do have Memorial Day coming up. It's my understanding that the township, in keeping with past practices, will be having its annual Memorial Day celebration at 11:00 a.m. here at the Township Building. I've had the pleasure of attending it the last couple of years. And I will say it's a very lovely event on a very somber day. And I do encourage people to come out and participate in it if they can. It doesn't take a whole, it doesn't consume a whole lot of time, but it is, it's a very, very good event. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gondik, Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
I'd like to extend my congratulations to all the police officers. I really enjoy hearing you read about how they earn their accommodations, because it reminds everyone about all the various ways they serve, protect, and help the citizens of Haverford Township. So thank you. I'd also like to, once again, remind everyone listening that our library is going to reopen next Thursday, May 22nd, at 10 o'clock. You'll be able to see the multi-story entrance in the modern elevator to ensure convenient access to all floors. A second-floor addition that increases the public space by over 25%, mostly for the children and the teens. A welcoming living room with a fireplace, perfect for quiet moments and reading, fulfilling the requests of senior patrons. Separate dedicated spaces, as I mentioned, for young children, tweens, and teens to allow these groups to gather and enjoy the library at the same time, in maximal comfort, but separated from each other. Meet lots of different meeting rooms for community gatherings, study rooms for small groups, and collaboration. An innovation zone with a versatile maker space to facilitate hands-on projects. Increased public computer access, including tech zones, laptop bars, ample charging outlets, and robust Wi-Fi coverage. A building infrastructure that will provide completely new and upgraded systems. No longer will our library be closing in the summer because the air conditioning conked out. A new parking lot across the street that will nearly double existing onsite spaces. It is an exciting, exciting time for the township, and I hope everyone makes the trek over to see the new library. It's going to be wonderful for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Forstie-Grupp, Commissioner Cavender.
Thank you. I'd like to also congratulate our police officers who were recognized tonight. It was a great ceremony, and I really appreciate the service of the police department. I also want to thank everyone who joined our Ward Five community meeting last week. I appreciated the great questions, the chance to share updates on the new Haverford Township Free Library opening, the Haverford 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which we will vote on at our June 9th meeting, and the Brenford Traffic Study, and the demo projects that are going to be associated with that. I'd also like to thank the township staff who attended and helped answer questions. I just want to take a moment to recognize some Haverford High School students who were honored. They earned the Pennsylvania Governor's Civic Engagement Award, Silver Level, for organizing and hosting a voter registration drive that helped register more than 65% of eligible seniors at the high school. Their efforts reflect a strong commitment to civic participation and the importance of having a voice in both local and national elections. This is the third year in a row the school has received this recognition. On that note, our primary election takes place on Tuesday, May 20th. This is your opportunity to help shape local and statewide leadership. Off-years are Pennsylvania's local and statewide and county races, which are really impactful. Every vote does matter. The people who represent you will be making direct decisions that impact your lives. And I don't have to tell the people who are here live in the meeting how important that is, but I hope everyone takes that commitment seriously. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And if you're voting by mail, your completed ballot must be received by 8:00 p.m. on May 20th. There's a drop box right outside the Township Building, or you can look online for more information. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cavender, Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you, Madam President. As I indicated earlier, I will be holding a meeting on May 19th, returning to my roots at Chestnut Wald in the cafeteria. All are welcome in the township, obviously, anyone from the Sixth Ward. I encourage to come, but anybody is welcome to come. There will be, there will be a number of township officials with us that night as well. And I can't speak for everybody at the meeting, but I will stay as long as anybody has any questions, and I don't run out of things to talk about. And after 20 years, that hasn't happened yet, so I don't imagine it's going to happen that night. The next day is Primary Election Day, so I am looking very forward to that one-two punch I'm going to take Monday night, and then all day Tuesday. Chief Viola, Deputy Chief Hagan, you must have popped some buttons off your shirt as you proudly commended your officers. I don't think that their actions and heroism happens in a vacuum. I think from the leadership at the very top on down, you folks set a great example for our PD. And it has become now a tradition for us to do this at a township meeting and at a board meeting, and I'm glad that we're part of it. So congratulations to all of your members. And thank you, Brian, for mentioning Memorial Day. It is a beautiful ceremony, and I encourage everybody to come to it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
11:00 a.m.? Oh, my meeting? Seven, I think.
Seven to 10.
What's that?
Seven to 10.
Oh, yeah, it's just seven. I'm going to wear the next day's clothes. I'm just going to wink, and then, you know, greet voters at 7:00. So, yeah, so it'll be seven, expectation is 7:00 to 8:30, but we have the room longer than that.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Quinn.
Yes, to the police, as everybody said, like, I love this meeting because it always shows the importance of our police department. And we get to hear things that we don't hear every day. And that's why, when we go anywhere, I'm proud to brag that I serve on this board, and I'm proud to brag about the police, too. And that's because of you, the you guys. And also, I'd like to, I thought it was great to see the McDonald group here. Jack and Carol did a great job for this community. And the people who have served on, like, on the board, you know, the Ninth Ward since Bill up until, or up to Mike, have done a great, great job as well. So the Ninth Ward continues to be in good, good hands. And stuttering awareness, thank you guys for allowing me to speak. It's always, like, years and years ago, I would not have ever had the guts to ever get up and speak here. And I think that's, so I thank you guys for all to allow me to have my voice heard. And I think we saw something great this past week. We have a pope from the United States, something that I did not ever think I would ever see. And even more cool is, the pope was at my high school, too. And I thought that was great. I was taught by those priests. And it was just, I was just overjoyed to have a pope from this town who actually mowed the lawns at the church up by the street here. So I just think that's so, it's so cool. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Hart.
First of all, Connor, it's always an honor to sit next to you. I mean, you did a great job. I'm very impressed. And you're very courageous. Just briefly, the Sunset Trail Running Series kicks off this week. The Sunset Trail Race is a series of races at the reserve, 5K races through the trails at the reserve. It's really a great race. First one is Wednesday, May 14th, and it starts at 7:00 p.m. There's a special one on Wednesday, June 11th. It's Ann's Purple-for-a-Purpose Pancreatic Cancer Fundraiser. That's also, along with the race, there's a walk. So I encourage everybody to participate. And the Commissioners' Cup will be up again, you know. Everybody's invited, so I'm ready to give it up here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart, Commissioner McCollum.
Just two quick notes, like Jerry and Connor had mentioned. A lot of thanks to the J.D. McDonough Foundation. As John Jr. had said, you know, we grew up together. So I ran into him last year, and he asked me, when I became commissioner, what could he do for the township? And I suggested he volunteer fire companies. And I'm just very glad that they were able to come out tonight, present the check to the chiefs. The other thing I have is, obviously, to John and Joe, your leadership shows, tremendous showing of amazing acts from your force. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner McCollum. Vice President McCluskey.
Yeah, just reiterate our appreciation for everyone, police force and all that they do a year round. It's always particularly touching to hear the life-saving stories that occurred in the past year. And I do think Officer Howard, I was, you mentioned it as he walked by, but I do remember that from last year as well, that there was a childbirth. So anyone who's pregnant, I guess, in Haverford Township should keep a lookout for Officer Howard in the next couple of months. The fun fair in the Third Ward continues this week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. If you're in the neighborhood during those nights, please just proceed with caution, as there's an influx of lots of people having fun, enjoying some, enjoying the rides, enjoying some funnel cakes, some fried Oreos. And I do think they are auctioning off pictures with the grass in the cemetery that the pope may or may not have. Another part of fundraising from the fun fair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey. So I just have a few remarks. I actually was able to cross some of them out because of the folks before me. But I'll start with the fact that the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, PENDOT, recently held a virtual public meeting on April 23rd to discuss its planned improvements at the Route 3's West Chester Pike and I-476 interchange, which spans Haverford and Marple Townships. The meeting covered both the scope of the project and the upcoming construction schedule, including anticipated traffic impacts for motorists in the area. Key improvements include a redesigned off-ramp to allow westbound traffic on Route 3 to access northbound I-476 without stopping at the South Lawrence Road signal, a restripped on-ramp to I-476 northbound, and a new channelized right-turn lane from South Lawrence Road. Additional enhancements include new signage, signal modifications, and updates to ADA curb ramps and pedestrian infrastructure. Construction is already underway, with traffic impacts expected in the coming weeks. And the project is expected to be completed in summer of 2026. So if you missed the meeting, you can find details on the PENDOT website. Just look up Route 3 and I-476 interchange improvement project. I will skip ahead to SEPTA cuts. So it was mentioned, actually, in some of the citizen comments earlier about just the concern related to SEPTA cuts. So SEPTA, for those who aren't aware, is facing an urgent and serious funding crisis that could have a devastating impact, not only for Haverford Township, but also for southeastern Pennsylvania and for the entire Commonwealth. Many residents may not be aware of the scope of this issue, but without adequate support from the state legislature, SEPTA will be forced to make deep service cuts and increase fares. Those have not happened yet, but there's a real threat of that right now. And our state legislature is going through budget discussions right now. Again, these cuts would severely impact workers, students, seniors, people with disabilities, and families across our region, while also threatening the economic vitality of our communities, institutions, and businesses. So I encourage all residents to engage in this critical conversation right now and contact your state legislators today. Public transit's not a luxury.